Okay, we are at eleven.
Okay, we, yep, we uh are out of closed session and let the record reflect that no decision was made in closed session. So, um, I lost my.
Alright, we're all ready to go then?
We are ready to go, recording is back on.
Okay, I'd make a motion to authorize our attorney, Bob Goodwin, to file a case to get a declaratory judgment concerning DD eighty.
Okay, we have a motion by Stecker. Tammy has the motion, okay, is there a second to Kyle's motion?
I'll do that.
Okay, we have a second by Hawes. Any discussion on the motion, everyone understand? Uh, can I do a general call?
You can do it.
Okay, if not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, motion carries unanimous. Okay, thanks Bob.
Yep, thanks Bob, anything else you need from us right now?
Goodbye. Yep, goodbye. Alright.
Thank you, Marge.
Yep, thanks, Marge. Okay, discussion with the county auditor whenever you're ready.
Okay, so next week. We are closed on Monday for Memorial Day already.
Sure, yep.
Where did this not go?
I know, next Wednesday from seven thirty to nine thirty AM is the intern breakfast for TCE DC at the Columbia Event Center. I have RSVP'd for all of us to attend.
All of the hours.
Seven thirty AM to nine thirty AM. Um, on the agenda next Tuesday, we have secondary road letting, um, contract for secondary road projects, budget amendment hearing number two. Improving the resolution for the budget amendment hearing, so far that's all I have on the agenda for next week. And I think that that is all I have, I do want to say that I do think it is important um for the landowners to get the answers that they want. Um, for DD four, um, the information that Don was talking about, um, did not come from my office, I just want that out in the open. Um, not that it matters, um, but that kind of offended me a little bit, so I just want.
Where did it come from? What information was it?
It was information Kyle provided, so any information you'll have to ask him.
Where did that come from?
Um.
I guess if we're gonna talk about it, just to be clear.
Uh, there was a lot of work put into reviewing the documents that the county had, but the core substance of the material came from the list of stamp warrants that were issued.
Oh, is that, yeah, is that what he was?
I don't know what he was referring to.
It looked like something that looked like a report from the county.
I don't know what he had in his hand, I couldn't see if that was.
The information that he asked where it came from at that hearing was information that Kyle provided at interest rate?
I think so, but I'm.
That's what I'm assuming he was.
Yeah, it was that spreadsheet, but I think he was referring to something else, a county report.
Oh.
It had to be a county report if he was saying it came from you, so we, I know you're saying you didn't, but it had to be a county report.
Well, then it would have been accurate, it wouldn't be inaccurate if it was a county report.
And I mean, they're requesting a county district work, FEMA dollars, and then the name of the individual is the three requests from the petition, so, and this is the.
He was saying all repair work receiving FEMA dollars too.
Wow, the.
There was a couple problems.
But I mean, this is all of.
That is um all of the information for the phase one.
Right.
And see, the problem with what he's asking for is he's only asking for everything from nineteen to present. There wasn't anything from nineteen. Phase one was assessed in twenty seventeen.
Seventeen.
Phase two was assessed in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, he's, he is only looking for things that have happened since I've been on the board and he's, I'm sure focused primarily on the FEMA project, but it's impossible to talk about the district as a whole if you don't look further back in the history books of what happened.
So we'll do that?
We have to, yeah.
Can I ask, there was a specific audit report that was issued of something with drainage, was that with this or not?
Are you talking about the one that?
It was like last fall it was issued?
Like Rob Sand put an opinion on?
Yeah.
That one?
Yeah.
It was.
Did that have to do with this?
That was all the drainage in the county.
That was more general than it was.
Yeah.
Um.
There was.
Just specific to this.
I actually, I have, I'm happy of it, but I just don't have it here, I have it at my office, so I need to read that a little bit closer, I guess.
Which Rob did not find any.
There was a statement made in there that I think we need to look at, but I'm not gonna quote it because I, like I said, I, I don't wanna not represent that report accurately, so um we should probably take a look at that.
Yep.
And you know, just if it involves our process, it's important to know what that process is and how we go forward from it and make sure it's alright.
Too many papers going on here. Okay, and, yeah, go ahead and, that's, that's all Tammy. Uh, Howard, I guess, yeah, we can go on with all your reports.
Something that phone call yesterday was Humboldt County, that's the only thing I did outside of the, well, reading.
Amber?
Yeah, I had, um, let me get to my notes, I had a North Island Community Action Organization meeting. The things that were talked about, they really do a lot, they, those people do a lot. Um, like I said, still trying to learn all of this stuff, but the things that we focused on, they talked about a new employee website that they're launching and um, they talked a lot about their healthy pregnancy program, um, they're very proud of that being fully staffed right now. Um, it's education for pregnant women, uh, they also do a lot of outreach work, um, directly with WIC services for that. Uh, we talked pretty much also about the impact of eliminating the community services block grant. Um, losing that would mean getting the state's most adaptable and effective funding. I'm not exactly sure what that statement meant, but anyway, losing it, it, it would hurt us, it would hurt us. Uh, low income, home energy assistance, um, if they do away with that program as well, um, that does create greater poverty. Um, maybe poorer health, um, things that, that are things that help us. Um, Casu, it helped nine hundred ninety-one people and with a value of four hundred seven thousand ninety-one dollars and eighty-four cents in six months. So, those block grants are very effective in helping Casu County people, so, and, and that, if you remember, was that letter of support or proclamation that we did, um, that I signed. Uh, early childhood in North Central Iowa, um, the first thing was the finance meeting was at nine, so I can't, couldn't do that phone call with Humboldt County. Um, so the finance committee met, um, and Selena went over all the financials and the one thing that there were some things she didn't think she would be able to do financially because of things with, going on with the state, but um, the way that the funding came down, she does have some discretionary, um, use of some money under administrative. And uh, she plans to use some of that to help the care team. Before, we had said that, I shouldn't say we, but the board prior to Viviana, it said they wouldn't be able to give money to the care team with the other things we're looking. But, um, and I think they, care team usually got around thirty-three thousand dollars, um, from this, but they're, can only maybe get fifteen. But it's at least to help them in a transition where that funding could go away, so that was talked about pretty heavily. And then, uh, we went over all of the made budget expenditures, um, talked again about the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And then we had updates from all of the people that make this up, too many to mention. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell, there was a lot of financial, is what it was.
Okay.
Uh, Kyle?
Um, yeah, the Humboldt County drainage meeting that we had yesterday, um, I don't know if we got any documents from them yet that we had talked about at that meeting, but that's something to have on a radar. Um, I have CIA DC this Friday for a full commission meeting and we're gonna do an executive committee meeting on Wednesday, so tomorrow.
Is that now, Boma?
Yeah, it's gonna be here.
Where are you guys having it?
Right here.
Right here?
Yep.
Yep. Well, it's nice.
You move those around?
Not typically, but we're moving this one just for travel, I mean, a lot of times we always go down there, but um, schedule wise for another guy that's up here, Mark Spieper, Ward County, he didn't really have a lot of time to spare, so we're trying to do it up here to be closer for less travel time for, uh, me and him.
Um, yeah, didn't really have any meetings other than that Humboldt call yesterday. Um, I don't know, did Amber, were you made aware of what Kyle was talking about, the document, that they discussed, um?
Doing that, uh.
Memorandum.
Memorandum of understanding.
With like, uh, setting a limit of fifteen thousand, anything under fifteen thousand that they would be able to, you know, if there's a repairs or a spray or any, you know.
For joint drains.
For joint drains, that they would be able to do that, anything over fifteen thousand, they're talking that we have to.
That's what they were requesting, yeah.
Yep, yep, that's what Kyle was.
One I had brought up a while back, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We did discuss that a little bit yesterday.
They said it was, um, kind of an opinion from ID's legal counsel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know of anything that's been an issue, like there's a case or anything against it, so, I mean, in all reality, if we did something like that, I don't think it would really change our normal procedure, because usually for small repairs, we don't ask each other, but I think that's why we had the joint meeting yesterday was they were asking us to cross our Ts and not their Is, but I don't know if it's really necessary. But on the surface, it seems like it probably wouldn't change anything from our standard practice, it would more put it in right, power handling stuff, so it's probably not bad, but I don't think it would change historical processes.
Is our process now fifteen thousand?
No, there is no.
There's.
They're saying technically right now we have to get together for every little thing, even though we haven't.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep. And they, somebody, some law, something in somewhere suggested we have an agreement. So they, they said they have an agreement for fifteen thousand of Wright County, one of the five, five thousand of Webster County.
Yep, they're trying to get one with all their neighbors.
Yeah, I, uh.
Five, five seems kind of little, like today's world.
Yeah.
I, I embarrassed myself probably, said fifteen sounded kind of high.
Oh.
Well, I mean, most of them are under five, for, for simple blowouts and.
And that's what I said, it kind of depends on the context, because if you've got a thousand acres that drains into something, fifteen thousand could be a sizable repair, but if you've got, uh, like PAC one, where we've got thirty miles of a ditch, if we go out and spray that, you're not gonna spray it for five thousand dollars.
Right.
So, or unless there's really good prior management already.
Yep.
So, stuff like that, I mean, we have joint drains with our other neighbors, we don't ask them for approval to go spray stuff, that's our normal maintenance program. It's, we've never had meetings about that, but they're saying, yeah, legal opinion or whatever caused this to come up, but they're saying that we should have something formal to outline that.
Is that supposed to be a number of days or we can't do that much without the adjut?
We're gonna, we're gonna see what they send us.
Yeah, we're gonna get their documents and review it and then talk about it as a board, so.
Tammy, did I tell you that I was gonna be on June third or June tenth?
June tenth, you told me.
Okay, good, that was correct, okay, very good.
Didn't wanna get your dates confused?
No, 'cause originally it was.
As of now.
Yes, I have you down for June tenth also.
Okay, anything else, Josh?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Well, I was on vacation last week and then had the meeting with Humboldt County yesterday, so.
Good timing.
About it. So, um.
You don't wanna give a report on your vacation?
It was nice.
Can we take a break before we do the handbook?
Yep, let's, let's, let's take a break for the handbook and, and come back to it.
Too long to sit.
Do you want this or do you want me to take it?
You and Deja, I've got the same thing here.
I would be a little pinch, uh, down here for this stuff.
I let, I.
Absolutely.
I sent an email out a little bit ago.
She responded, should we call her?
I sent an email, so, to everybody.
Oh, to everybody, okay, so if they don't come, that's.
Might not hurt to call her.
Uh, yeah, we'll, should I just call her now, that way she has a little time to grab her umbrella?
Still right.
We'll call you, yeah.
She's here, you don't have to.
Okay, then I'll call her.
She's got her umbrella.
She does have her umbrella. Morning, Mom.
Morning. Do you have a second?
I suppose, for you.
Oh, for you. Thanks.
You're asking how stupid can that hot guy be?
This is very interesting.
Hold on, yep.
Um, see, there's. It sounds like, okay, what do you anticipate, however, dates that you have to use?
Well, the board will need to have, uh, some, uh, some information, what. We're just wanting to keep it real good today, just to make sure we aren't confusing people more than I already am.
And, um, there's a topic that we, I think the, he is in twenty nineteen, but he was on that.
Probably, but I mean, the project goes back farther and then the. Yeah, I mean, we'll have a talk called farther in twenty nineteen four. Well, this is, this is not, this is, uh. Good morning.
So, what's new? Rain, nice shower.
Yeah, yeah. A little cool with the main preference, but.
Oh, man, that's cold.
Right, yeah, but.
I put my winter pajamas on.
I know, it's like, last night, well, it currently that good fireplace. And basically, it's scattered, it's like, what else? It's like.
It's been nice to just throw it because you get a little fire started against it.
It just, it just adds a whole different light, so, but.
No, I, I don't know, yesterday morning I walked in and I had a short sleeve shirt on, and it wasn't bad, I think, and then all of a sudden, a day went on, I don't know if she got some booze and then go for it, well.
And so, is the weather on at this point?
It is.
See, I've got heat, because we, she brought over the chair yesterday, she's, oh my gosh, it's so warm over here, she said, oh, you have.
Yeah, they, uh.
We've even had.
Will said he drained all the, whatever, liquid water, whatever is in here, I don't know if that's a, which water or something.
Yep.
That's all.
Yeah, well, there's all sorts of electric heaters going on, they, but it just, and at one time, it seems to me that we're supposed to not have electric heaters.
I know. I didn't hear you walk up, no, I don't. I've heard that one too. It depends on when the wind blows and if it's.
It can be cold.
Very cold.
My office is pretty, it could be hot on a Sunday, because we get a lot of air conditioning, the way that circulation is, but otherwise, it's pretty cold.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Alright, we'll, we'll call you if it's.
But basically, in the engineering area, the engineering, so an engineer prepares his application.
They prepare the final report.
Want to.
Get all the.
That's correct.
Legally. Their, their. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Okay. Nurse?
Yeah.
Well, that's where I.
Not hard to find.
That conversation. Thank you.
Okay, handbook time.
Handbook time. Two weeks goes by fast. Okay, I'm understanding section one point six through one point one five. And the first, um, section is on job vacancies and posting. I think we tried to just clean up, um, that it will be posted on the website and on the bulletin board on the second floor, and that we reserve the right to look at other recruiting sources. I know we've kind of dabbled in, in the.
Yeah, we've had a good look on the IT side of things, finding a call by candidates, it's much better than it would in the newspaper.
On what side?
I think it's a bigger source.
Pardon?
It's an online platform.
Yeah. Is there a reason you don't want it in the newspaper? I don't, I think it can be in the newspaper, I think in like some positions, it was just kind of cost prohibitive to, to even recruit. I mean, I know most people have put it in the newspaper.
If you're actively managing your in-date account, it's a lot cheaper, because you're not paying for candidates that reject within the first one four hours. If you're not managing and watching it, it needs to be more considered.
I think we've just had that topic or discussion, you know, recruit, recruiting, trying to get those positions open or filled, that are open continues to be a challenge, so I think that's why we kind of left it open to the individual department, as long as it's posted, as long as it's on the website.
It just says in, before.
As a description.
Yeah, I mean, or even before, it said, as the county's policy to advertise position openings in the local newspapers when necessary, that wasn't even.
It was when necessary, yeah, and but we did, I mean, I think that was just good practice.
Mm-hmm.
And then that paragraph that kind of repeated. Was removed.
Excuse me, I don't have any.
Yep, sure.
One, six.
One point seven personnel files, um, again, I think the, the only clarity that was made was in the second paragraph, um, that people have the ability to look at their personnel file, we did put an, an ending date, just not knowing why people would come, and quite honestly, I don't think we've had anybody who will look at the personnel file. Um, most of them are basically insurance, um, the benefits, and then we also have another file that includes identifying information, contact information, CEUs, and that kind of varies a little bit. Um, there was a big transition a few years ago to centralize, but certain departments need to keep track of their CEUs so they have files for, for training purposes. You have anything?
So you're, you're saying, review, I agree, but the, well-employed isn't.
Well-employed and then next week, and one year afterwards.
And then is the blue at the top of the next page added?
The blue on the next page, yes.
That it should be public record?
Yeah.
Which, yeah, that just kind of a heads up to the law, but, yeah, try with that.
Is that, is that redundant if an employee is terminated in lieu of termination?
It says terminated, deemed.
Or resigned soon.
Resigned in lieu.
In lieu of termination. If an employee is terminated.
That just means that if they're given the option to resign or be terminated, you choose the option to resign.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
And that, that does happen, that has happened, so, I think we need to keep that happening.
I think we need to keep that happening.
But if you're terminated. You're terminated, you you don't, if you resign in lieu of termination, you resign.
It must be, I know this is Anne's wording, um.
I think terminated comma demoted comma or resigns in lieu of term or resign, yeah, you'd say it would be why you need in lieu of termination.
So it's resigns in lieu of termination is how you're reading it?
Yeah.
If you're terminated, if you're demoted, if you resign in lieu of termination, not that those three.
You need the in lieu of termination, which is saying.
I think so because you can resign and then you can resign instead of being terminated, there's a difference.
You can read that.
Yeah, they're they're different factors.
Or be demoted in lieu of termination.
Right.
Being.
And that and those reasons is why they may be public record.
Yeah, that just just looks the way I read it.
The reason I think is opens up the public record factor at it.
Yeah. Yep. And I would, yeah, it looked like that came from Anne, so I would say we should keep that as recommended by our attorney.
Reemployment. I think we've had some discussions on that recently. Um, at the time of this writing, I guess we didn't for this draft, we didn't have any comments, I know that there has been comments. I don't know if there needs to be some clarity or what people are thinking.
I mean, everybody's fond of saying, I'm no lawyer, but it looks like the second sentence doesn't even have to be in number one point eight because it's addressed in one point nine.
Yeah.
It probably, it probably should be there to specify that they are separate topics and it's addressed separately.
There are other issues with that?
Transfers is probably a long one, you talk about.
How about if I just kind of flag it and maybe we could throw it back at her and I'm I'm.
I'm not passionate about it.
I'm all about
Concise.
Getting it
Condensed.
To condense, but again, there's probably been a reason why it was put in there and why it was readdressed. So transfers you want to talk about?
Probably.
I do have vague written behind it in my own writings, but.
Well, I think the issue that came up with the transfers, I don't know, issues is the right word, but the.
Right.
Situation.
And so based on that, I tried to do a little bit of just for my own wording and what does accumulated benefits mean? Um, and I'm sure there's different ways of interpreting that.
Yeah.
So accumulated benefits in employment refers to benefits earned by an employee over time based on their service or other criteria but which are paid out at a later date, these benefits can include vacation times, sick leave, or retirement contributions. I think probably the question was pay.
Yeah.
Are you talking in reemployment, the last?
Transfers, one point nine.
I I don't see accumulated in there.
Well, actually accumulated is
That's in, is in one point eight.
Is up in the is up in the re- with the reemployment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, that that makes sense because their anniversary date does not change, so of course they keep all their accumulated benefits, but I think the big thing was the pay.
Yeah, especially with our um time periods and the wage scale. I think that's what needs to be addressed the most for clarification.
Correct, yeah, it doesn't address it at all.
Yeah.
So should we ask of a review of one point eight and one point nine and then see how they can complement each other versus clear, clear up?
Well.
I think the board needs to decide if what they passed for one employee is going to be in the in-book or not.
I I think the big que- well, for me, the big question is like, I I realize when somebody leaves, that's very obvious, but if and you cannot, I agree, put every situation in the handbook, but um some of these things, I think that we tend to take too much out of the department heads or elected officials' hands um in that like say, man, this happened in the attorney's office where someone left but came back, same job. They had experience in that exact job but wasn't considered at the time of wages, but then we had a new person transfer over, had experience to another department, had experience in that, and we did use that. So I think clarification to department heads um and allowing them to kind of make some of those decisions themselves, I, that's kind of dangerous too because then we could have a whole variety of things going on. But to me they should be able to make some of those decisions for their own department. If we're, you know, if we're gonna say it's okay to talk about experience for someone, but then another person, well, but but they left, but it was the same experience for another position for that same position experience, really in essence should have counted for that as well.
At the same.
Is is all I'm saying.
Yeah, at the same time though, you know, employees that come here and work here understand that this is the handbook and they understand that if they leave and come back, they come back at the start.
Or does it say that in the handbook?
One point eight.
Yeah, one point eight, have no accumulated benefits from previous employment.
What's the benefits, the benefits aren't just what you've done.
That's right, yeah, I think the wording is that benefits versus accumulated, that you have accumulated.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is because when you leave, you have an exit interview and you get rid, if you have vacation, you're compensated for all of that.
The word benefits there, are you talking about benefits as in health insurance and vacation, are you talking about benefits as a as a generic word, the benefit of having employed previously could be years or or months of experience. How is, how you're reading benefits there?
Well, I think, yeah, I, the way I look at that, it's it's to say that you you're not gonna start with earning vacation at you're gonna start back at that.
At the, as a new employee, yeah.
You're you're not gonna. Right. So, and you know benefits is the word, what does it mean?
I think where experience needs to be considered is is in the A. I do.
It it does, I would agree with that, but I think and whether this is a now conversation or a conversation when we talk something that more so applies to longevity, I think the wage scale that we have is primarily a base pay, there's there's longevity in there that other positions have, but if you're talking years of service, of ten or twenty years of experience from another county or another similar industry in the private sector or whatever, like, I mean, when Todd was here, we were talking about recruiting from another attorney's office or something like that. If if you're actually trying to um apply knowledge that an individual has in completing the position, I don't think it should be factored into our wage scale for base pay because those are one or two-year timeframe. It's a short time period to start, move up. You have your probationary period of one year and then um year or two for most of them, so it's a it's a very short process and that time period is not gonna be something that most people would gain long institutional knowledge from, so if, I guess, in my opinion, if we're talking about benefits, maybe longevity would be something we could consider um as a factor of adding to the base if they have similar experience or something at a another point in their life, but I think that ties into the conversation with longevity more than just transferring across departments um because that should be their base. So. I guess, I mean you could say it's maybe an extreme example, but if I decide to try and apply for a position at the sheriff's office and hypothetically, if they had a five-year program and I've been on the board for six years, am I gonna start at the same pay as a deputy who's been here for five to ten or fifteen years with zero experience, I don't think that would be appropriate because I don't have any experience in that. So just because I was an employee in county government for Cusick County, doesn't mean I have any applicable experience at that position. So I don't think it should be considered a transfer in the base.
Well, I get it, but that's where I think that our department heads, we need to rely on themself for and to make some of that decisions. And we can make it pretty difficult. Sounds kind of difficult, but um anyway, I think we should ask for, we're coming back to it. Yeah, we we need to have a discussion, yes. That we will get.
I marked both of those sections that we need to review and clarity, because sometimes in going through, you don't really focus on it. I mean, the whole handbook kind of gets overwhelming, so I think if you really look at certain sections, I would say we really could use some clarity with that.
Yeah, I agree with Amber on the idea of the well-being um department heads, because most department heads are out here elected officials and they're elected to run those departments and um and they have a responsibility to hiring and running those departments, so it's basically.
To some degree, yeah, but you have four department heads here that are.
The other, the other elected. Yeah.
There's there's both sides of it.
Right, right.
Yeah, but they still run their department, know what their department needs, we don't, we don't run their department, we put them in place to run their department.
So we're saying review it and then move on to reduction force one point ten?
I thought we were trying to accomplish something.
I know.
I thought so too.
What are we trying to con- I know, I.
I think um
This has really come up to, I mean, it's come up in prior to September when these edits were done, and so I don't think we addressed that, I think we just accepted it as was.
Correct, yeah. Yeah. We're gonna have to review this this for sure, but uh what the board wants to do, but I I guess I would be of the of the opinion like, well, I mean, again, I don't wanna just repeat what's already been said either, but in after visiting with Todd last time about the last employee transfer. I mean, generally generally moving from one office to the next, you're not doing the same thing. I mean very it it depends, but but even being a clerk in the treasurer's office and going and being a clerk in the auditor's office, you're gonna be doing different things. You're doing clerk duties, but you're doing different, it's covering different things, and so I I guess.
But he also said he the he feels that the department heads and elected officials need to.
Correct, so I I can see your point there in that if if they feel that the problem you run into is that then you have one department that does things this way and then you have another department that does things this way and there's no consistency. Even if we're trying for consistency, it's just, I mean I I I don't know, I I mean, you see what I'm saying, it's, then you have different departments doing different things. And I'm not saying either one of them are wrong in doing that, it's just.
I agree.
The point of the handbook is to have a
Yeah.
a regulation consistent policy to follow. I
It's also, it's been discussed, there's can't anticipate every situation.
No.
I don't hit it, maybe I'm naive again, but gotta get rid of that line sometime, but it it can't happen all that often. You you can discuss it, I mean, he, so that we've we've had Rogers, one transferred to sheriff's office from the county attorney recently, anyway, well, since I've been here, then we had the the one go from housekeeping to the county attorney's office and.
And we had a reemployment.
Before I was here, but yeah.
Right, but I mean, that's kind of driving the conversation.
Reemployment is a whole, yeah, a whole separate, I I think that's clear, I think you just you leave and you come back, I mean, if.
That's your choice, yeah.
Yeah, if 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 they wanna, I think, then the the department said, hey, this person is coming back, they've got the experience I want, I mean, I think we can review that individually and say, yeah, sure, go ahead. So I.
I agree with that, but I think that department heads didn't know maybe what they could do, that they just followed the procedure, because with the reemployment, they went back to the exact same position, so they had, what, I don't know, I can't say for sure, but at least five years experience, you know, so I think department heads need to realize that fine, if it's up to the discretion of the board, but they should be at last for that.
And and I think that's fair, but I think when we're talking about the base wages and the couple steps that are involved there, we have to remember that that's still the base wages, longevity is really what addresses your years of service, and I've said it plenty of times before, the value that's on that currently is peanuts, but that's the value of experience that is, that's in our current policy, so I think if longevity was something that could be accounted for with someone being hired and if someone's got five or seven or twelve years of experience, that's the bucket I would put that in, and they are two very distinct buckets.
That longevity ends when you leave employment.
Currently, yeah.
Yeah, that longevity ends when you leave employment, I think what I'm referring to specifically is those wage scales where we had someone start at the base who had been here, hadn't been gone very long and honestly, Cusick County was fortunate enough to have somebody come back and because of the situation at hand in that office, and that, those years of experience weren't taken into account, I wasn't here, I don't think, when that all took place. But then we had another instance where we where we said yes to. Okay, I understand the whole, this is a different job description, I get it. When it's like that, but the one I'm referring to was not, and they started at the base, those years of experience were not accounted for. And then we turned around and we did account for them.
So.
I'm just looking for clarity in those situations, and it does not have to be done today because obviously, that's a big discussion, and I think all department heads and elected officials should take part in that conversation. I do.
So going back to the wage scale thing, um I'll make the argument that, yes, we wanna, you know, those people that had the experience and came back and everything you know, bringing them back in at a higher step, um because they, you know, were only gone for a little. you know, bringing them back in at a higher step, um because they, you know, were only gone for a little bit, we have to be careful of that. Because of the fact that, you know, we don't want people to just go, well, I'm gonna test the waters over here for a year and see how I like it, knowing that I can come back at my same pay that I was at before.
Okay, so then basically what you're saying is experience means nothing, so you, when you come in, you start at the base.
It's.
Try to.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, I mean, you're, kind of, that statement does take back the experience meaning anything. They left and they came back.
Well, they left.
It's still experience.
They left and came back, so then that should restart their probationary period, considering the fact that, well, they left. Are they going to leave again second, something else, something's up? That, I mean, that's the way I'm, I'm kinda looking at it, you know, you, you gotta protect the, you know, the, the job as, as well, because like I said, you, then you got people that are just gonna bounce to a different job and be like, well, I'm gonna try this for a year and if I don't like it, I can come back at the same pay that I was, because I have the experience. I, and I, I don't agree with rewarding that as such. That has nothing to do with their experience, I, you know, I'm very appreciative of the experience that they would be bringing back. However, then you're just.
So then why, I guess my question would be, why would we acknowledge experience someone has that's only been here six months? That was previous experience, not even working for the county, why would we acknowledge that then?
That's a good question.
And you can't acknowledge it, just say, oh, we're not gonna acknowledge it, you left. Who knows why they left? That's not, that's kinda discriminatory to even take that into consideration. I'm just saying, we handle it different ways. I don't even know if we can be clear in the handbook on how to handle this, but um I.
Yeah, I'm not saying that that's what we put in the handbook, but I'm just saying that's, you know, a situation that could easily come up, you know, and how do we handle that situation, how do we put that in the handbook, you know? I agree, we should reward the experience and stuff, but do we wanna reward people for testing out the waters at another employer and then coming back to us for the same wage that they left with, you know, and not having to go through a probation period? No clear answers, kinda how it feels.
My question is, why does, why do the transfers, we have nothing to do with hiring employees unless it's a department head, but why do the transfers come to the board in the first place? And why is that not just outlined in the handbook and then handled as any other employee that's being hired, if you're just working with department heads? That's, that's my question, why, why is the board involved in the process?
I don't know.
I don't know, I, I have that.
My, my only thought to that is when you're discussing transferring employee, you're discussing, because here it talks about the anniversary date doesn't change, um so it allows them to continue occurring their benefits and stuff, as if they never left. And, and I think bringing that to the board um.
I think, I think to some degree, there could be the potential conflict, I mean, for example, the one that transferred from housekeeping to the attorney's office, if Tammy said, I feel like this is gonna be a huge strain on my department, I'm not supportive of it, then the board would be the piece in the middle to make a decision on what's best for the county in that regard. In between department heads potentially, if that ever came up, so I think that could be one of the reasons it was put there, but obviously, I didn't craft that language, so I don't know.
To me, it's just, it's simplicity, I mean, it just kind of, I think it does outline the fact that their benefits continue, which why wouldn't they? They're not leaving employment, they're still employed, I mean.
They're, they're making a commitment to the county.
But it's, it's not for us to decide whether or not they can leave one department and go to another. We're just acknowledging that their benefits continue. We can't tell a person, no, sorry, you can't go transfer to X department, we, we can't say that. They, that, that employee has every right to go to a different department if they want, and a department head has, head has every right to hire somebody from another department. It's called equal opportunity employment, which we are required to follow.
I don't know if we've comfortable conclusion on.
So Donna, you're, you're checking with a law, a.
I guess I would, I would just ask her to, to really tone in on those two sections.
And then you come, you come back the next time we're doing the next section, we can, we can finish that up?
I, I would say present to hers while the situations that have come up and see if there's anything that can be added to help with those situations, like with the, the start, you know, similar to the reemployment, the start pay issue, um what the recommendation is on that, you know, on top of the, the cumulative benefits, um and then the transfers and um best way to handle that with um the, the pay scale and.
And maybe.
Well, I knew there was a lot of questions on those two sections, but to really, yeah.
And I mean, it'll probably need to be outlined in our wage scale resolution as well, so that'd be something that those two documents will need to match at some point.
Do you guys do that each July?
If there's a raise, yes.
At fiscal year.
And just talk to her about that, or where you're at with that, or. I mean, 'cause that's, 'cause that's kind of a separate moving piece too.
Yeah, so we just update the resolution.
Okay.
Based on the increase in the.
So just the amount that's increased, not the details?
Unless we have, like this year, we will have um positions to add that haven't been included before, so those will be added.
What positions will we add?
Office manager.
Office manager, um victim witness coordinator.
Ones we've already voted on as a board, right?
Correct.
Housekeeping clarified versus, was there separation on that?
Oh, we were gonna do one for that too.
Yeah, housekeeping, yeah.
Well, it's not adding positions, it's just changing the.
It's setting the wages, they haven't been on the resolution, so they need to be added to the resolution. That's what I mean, they're not new positions, they're just listed on the resolution.
Okay, well, sounds like we're gonna need to come back to that one. Uh so let's see what, you know, give them that, um give her that information and see what they come back with, with some recommendations. Decide on, on if their recommendations for the language is good, or if we wanna add anything else, so.
So section one point ten, reduction in force, again, I think it's the second paragraph, just I guess giving the understanding that they're recalled and don't return. Probably terminated.
Have we ever had a situation where somebody's laid off and not terminated?
Well, I think if, if they're on lay, well, we haven't had this experience, I don't even know how to.
Why is that even?
Well.
Somebody doesn't show up to work?
If it happens, we have to have a policy for it.
Yeah, the situation, the time of the situation is not the time to develop a policy.
Well, why is, why is the title reduction force, I mean, it is, why isn't, why isn't the title termination? Or why is, or the separation of employment, but.
It's probably because it's, say, the board makes, you know, a decision, because financially we can't afford so many people in each department or something, that would be a decision that we're making to reduce the force to save money. I think that's probably why it's ordered that way, it gives us the ability to have some kind of a policy to follow if we need to do that.
I can look it up if there's something there that exists.
One eleven?
Yep.
So I think the, the writing in red is just what we had thrown in there, and then Anne had clarified that an employee's separation date cannot be extended through the use of paid leave, so I think there's two, two sections there, but just the blue needs to stay. I think what we've experienced is somebody submits a resignation, but then wants to use vacation or sick leave, and then we really can't have staff here.
So the red would go away?
Red would go away, just keep the blue, if, keep the blue, I mean, that's her recommendation, or that was her.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if her recommendation came after our.
Yeah, I think she was kinda tightened it up a little bit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
So on that section, you're removing the red?
Yeah.
'Cause the blue covers it.
The blue covers it, it kinda repeats itself, and so I think it was just two options that were left in there and we could.
And Doug, did you have concerns with that on the last two weeks?
Well, I, I think either one of those, yeah. They, they are redundant, neither, only one of those, the blue or the red. Would definitely say that people cannot use their paid leave to extend their separation date.
So if you've got, yeah, that's gonna retire, he gives you two weeks' notice, he can or cannot use vacation during those last two weeks?
Cannot.
There is, well, there is a little caveat that says, you know, unless it's approved by the.
That's gonna get striked.
Yeah.
But that's gonna get striked, right?
Well, but there was, I thought we had that during, so like some.
It says the employee cannot extend through your use of paid leave and vacation, would be the paid leave.
I, I agree, I agree. It doesn't say, well, if you're striking the red, there's nothing there about a quarter of a day.
Right.
Do you guys earn, do you earn vacation during vacation? You earn, you don't have contract, you don't have PTO, you don't earn PTO.
Not PTO, only vacation.
But I think we've had somebody, people have had like an appointment that their department head knew that they would be gone, and maybe they've extended their retirement date or leave date.
It's basically to say, I'm giving my, yeah, I'm giving you my notice, I'm done May thirty first, but I'm actually not done until June thirtieth because I have vacation.
And I'll get another month.
Get a month of month.
Motivations.
Right, right, so.
So we are striking what's in red there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Well, like you just said, you, you're gonna get paid the money anyways, and then, but the insurance would be a benefit, but so. So what you said is accurate? So, so if you've got four weeks of vacation, say, I don't even know if you can do it, so let's just stay with hypothetically, and you wanna be done July first, you just say, I'm gonna be done June first.
And then you get paid for your whatever vacation.
But then you wouldn't get your insurance, is that what you're saying? Is that scenario?
He's saying we'll take that out, they can't do that anymore.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to do that.
It's based on last day worked, so if a person says, hey, I'm retiring July thirty first, and it's April first, there's no saying they can't take vacation time in that time period, it's just their last day.
They need to work their last day. Or be employed, I mean.
Last day or last two weeks?
Well, that's the other thing, you have people who show up for the last day too, last two weeks.
I think last two weeks is okay, but you know, sometimes people might give you, you know, three, four months' notice, you know, when they're gonna retire, so they should be allowed to vacation day in there if they want to.
Yeah, I think the issue is mostly they give their two weeks' notice, but I'm gonna take vacation those two weeks, I'm not gonna be here. I think that's where the issue was initially.
And as your last day worked in order to.
Yeah.
Get your benefits or health insurance.
And you, but some of the problems are that some department heads would say, okay, that's fine. And the other department heads say, no, you're not gonna take vacation.
So, so if, if I said hypothetically, my last day is June sixth, I'm gonna have insurance for the whole month of June?
You'll, through July, maybe through July.
Through July?
Yeah.
So, and if I've got four weeks of vaca, I'm giving you the two weeks' notice, and if I got four weeks' vacation, the next line says you're gonna pay it out anyway, so.
So now, you're gonna get paid.
You're gonna get paid, so I can understand the language not wanting you to be gone the last two weeks, that's fine, it, it, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. You can engineer the system the way you want it. Do you get, the insurance is good the month after you leave?
Yes.
Depending, like, if you were to.
If you leave May thirty first, it's only good through June.
June, yeah.
But if you leave June sixth, it's good through July.
Correct.
And that's in here somewhere?
I think that.
It's our.
That's a yes or no question.
Yeah, I don't know if it's in here.
It's not, it's not.
So what, is this a common understanding?
I don't know if it's actually in here, it's in our well-marked agreement, and it's in our insurance, but I don't know. It may, yeah, no, there is an example, I apologize, there is an example. It also has some wording that needs to be cleaned up, because the dates were.
Later on.
Yeah, it's later on. No, it is in there, it's an example of when it starts, when insurance starts and when insurance ends.
Okay. I, I, the way it looks to me, like, put in what you got in blue and strike the red, and you're fine. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Any department heads have a problem with striking the department that's approved by?
I guess I, I'm still not clear on, if somebody puts in their two weeks' notice and they've got nine days' vacation, they won't take nine days' vacation and work the last day. I mean, they're, when we strike the red, that's okay.
I don't.
No, the blue, the blue takes care of that.
Blue takes care of it.
But if they're gonna have one day at the end, where they're gonna come in and work.
So it's in the last two weeks?
Well, we're striking all the rest.
We're striking the two weeks.
Okay, all right.
See, I think that two weeks is.
That two weeks is important, I think, probably. I mean, you could just say.
It says the county expects you to provide written notice, saying the reason for your resignation to your department head at least two weeks before the effective date. Employee, blah, 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 employee separation cannot be extended to, I understand what you're saying.
Could you, I mean, I mean, it's kind of redundant, but you could just say vacation and comp time cannot be used during the last two weeks of employment, period.
Makes the combo of the area.
It just defines it.
The department head stuff.
Just define, period.
And then you've got, unless approved by the employee's department head, which.
We're gonna scratch.
Puts it back up to the department.
We're gonna scratch that probably, I would say, because then we've got, and we open ourselves up for, but so and so did it, and so and so did it. You know, so I think just period.
Again, if your, if your safe goal, if your personal goal is to be done, uh.
Most people would want, I think most people would just want, hey, give me a check, give me a check for my, for my vacation, I, I don't, maybe not, but.
Unless they just don't wanna be here the last two weeks.
That's true.
So, so just for clarification, we're leaving the first part of the red, but taking off the second half of the red.
Taking off starting unless.
Okay.
So then the other, the other concern is that if you have an employee that you do want to leave and is disgruntled, and you would prefer them not to work those last two weeks, I would like the option to be able to have them take vacation those last two weeks. Because we have run into that.
There is nothing that says.
Well, if you change the language to say.
You can, you can also say, how about if we just make today your last day?
And then you get paid out that vacation.
Yeah, because then their last day isn't in two weeks, so it doesn't matter.
They've given you the notice, but you need to say, how about if we just make it today?
Because you can, you can do that. I mean, if somebody resigns.
Or gives you their two weeks' notice and you.
Or gives you your two weeks' notice and there's been issues, you can say, okay, well, how about you give me your keys, goodbye.
So are you paying them for the two weeks plus their vacation? Yes.
No.
Right. If you're asking, if you're asking them to.
No, I think, I think you would need to. I do. I think you would need to. But that is something that could be asked.
That would, that'd be something I'd clarify with the attorney because I think.
By the attorney. But I do think they could argue, I've given you notice, you've chosen to not let me work these two weeks.
Right.
I think that we would be obligated in some way to pay them, but without getting in a lawsuit. I mean, what's better, paying an attorney to in a lawsuit or just paying them their two weeks?
Well, we can pay our attorney now to set up a policy so we don't have to deal with it fully.
Every situation could be different.
And every lawyer's answer would be, it depends.
Credit card.
Credit card policy.
Credit card.
I sit there and then it's scratched out, but it's still there.
We have a county credit card policy, so I think we just need to make sure that that county credit card policy that the board approved matches what's in the handbook.
Does this match that policy right now?
I didn't bring that with me yet.
I don't know. I could go grab it if you want me to.
That'd probably be easier.
Yep.
If we have a policy, it doesn't need to be in the book.
Then that too.
Maybe C policy.
Yeah, that too.
That would be a question I would ask Anne. There's certain things, they have preferences that are or are not in the handbook.
Were you reading that the way that who's got a credit card?
Um, the sheriff's office, the auditor's office.
They pass them around.
Um, yes, in the sheriff's office.
Wherever they go.
And then.
About the road department.
EMS.
EMS.
I think everybody, everybody within that department, it's not just the department head that has the credit card, basically.
Right.
Conservation.
EMS, emergency management.
VA.
VA?
I think VA, conservation.
Is it just the engineer's office has one secondary or?
No.
Or?
You don't have one at all.
You don't have any at all? Okay, okay.
You guys just operate on reimbursement?
Correct.
Sounds like you want it that way.
Exactly.
Okay, that paragraph is complete.
I'd, I'd probably be inclined to say.
Have to agree with you.
I do want any accusations.
They're a good idea.
I've been in pursuit of counting one. There are problems. If we need a credit card, I'd use it myself and I ask for reimbursement.
Yeah. I agree. The only reason we got one for, I guess it's kind of for department heads, is because there's now like classes, for example, um, sanitarian has to register for some upcoming classes and they, you have to register and pay online. Can't do it with a.
You can't send a check or?
No.
Which is, yeah, do you use your personal to get reimbursed or do you use the county guard?
So, no, they are not an exact match. So I guess the question is, do we need to have it in there?
And we need to review it since we don't have.
So what are some of the?
Meaning, could we see a copy of it?
Yeah, this, the credit card policy, the last one that I have was approved in twenty sixteen. Um, but then it says the credit card policy that's in the handbook was approved in twenty eighteen.
I'm pretty sure we.
Although the handbook says twenty seventeen.
So it, so it looks like the handbook was updated after the credit card policy. So I don't know.
I feel like we may change this to it since I've been on the board.
So I don't know.
I know we brought up the issues of it, but I don't remember making changes since I've been.
Well, I think we should probably approve the lang, the language of the credit card policy at some point here to put in.
Well, I think it should be in two separate places for sure. If that's the place for it, fine. If this is the place for it, fine, let's make it mine.
And you can say what it's at, you know.
I think Anne would probably say it should be in the handbook because my other conversations with her about there's stuff that's CIGC in the handbook and policies and procedures, um, that would be my gut feeling, but I guess I don't care where it is either. I just, I do think it needs to be, if it is in two places, it needs to be the same and it needed to be referenced.
Right.
But if it's, if not, it should be in one place and it should be referenced and be clear.
Benefit to the having it in the handbook is then everything's in one spot.
Other than they're different, is there any material differences between the two?
So specifically prohibited in the policy, it doesn't list, um, meals or food. Well, it says gratuity. It says gratuity on meal or other expenses, but the handbook says meals and food unless authorized for attendance at a conference or a training.
Well, the difference could be in two thousand sixteen, if you're looking at the two thousand sixteen one, we really didn't have too many with credit cards. It was the sheriff's office and I mean, I think that was it. So that could be, you know, the difference. Why they would be different.
Yeah.
Cause we didn't, at that time, the board was very against credit cards.
In the, um, policy, it says the count, credit limit for each department shall not exceed two thousand dollars. There's no limit on the handbook. I mean, I, I could keep going through it, but I think there's significant differences.
Well, in that case, do we send both of them there to review and, and make any suggestions and and request that, you know, she commented on if we need it in both places or if we just need to reference it from the handbook to the policy or?
I think the board needs to determine.
What we want.
What you want in your policy.
Yes.
For sure.
Let's.
Sounds like it needs to be re, redone.
Let's have both of them side by side where we can.
Maybe you want to pause here with the handbook and.
Well, I mean, we've only got.
Well, we don't have much left here, but.
No, I mean, I think we just, we need to review that. We need copies of them and we need to decide the best language and approve the policy here before we put it anywhere, whether it be just in the office or in the handbook too.
Yeah.
We need to have an actual policy first.
And it does have in there that anyone who has it should sign a pursuit county credit card agreement. I don't know if we have template for that agreement somewhere or if that's just the policy that's laid out there.
We've had a signature.
Yeah, if it's on this policy on the bottom, you have to sign, the employee has to sign it and date it.
Well, yeah, let's get that, come back to it. Next one.
One point one three, workplace privacy.
Work privacy searches. Um, I think Anne just clarified that not only is it the workspace, but it's equipment, vehicles and technology devices.
Looks good, looks fine to me.
I think there isn't much there. And then reimbursable expenses, I think probably tie in some of the wording that we've used as far as, I mean, they kind of go back and forth. Cause I think that policy doesn't outline the meal expense.
Yeah, the meeting mileage policy.
Right. And I think that was the difference. My recall was that the handbook had things, but then the policy could be more updated, you know, if there were changes like in meals.
It was amended back in twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Um, twice actually in twenty twenty one, so. There, it probably is some new wording that needs to be added to the handbook.
Well, and that does talk about the hotel requirements. I remember that one that was kept because there's certifications for that. And that is something to keep in mind.
So on B, um, taking out the red, because again, we had put it in there and then I think Anne clarified referencing the code section.
Well, we were, we were, we were kind of, excuse me, God, it's not that I didn't listen to you, I didn't listen to you, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
He's honest.
We were at Perry Meadows, the new officer training thing at Perry Meadows and there was a guy staying off-site because they weren't approved.
They weren't.
That's what he said. I have no idea. It was true. I looked at him and bewildered then as I am now.
I was, I was bewildered. I didn't know.
So we were staying in Perry Meadows, technically it didn't, it didn't qualify. I, I.
It doesn't qualify?
Well, that's what this.
That's what Des Johnson told us and we were like, somebody pull, somebody pull up stuff.
Well, it might, it might not have been specifically because of the sex trafficking trade, but their county may only allow.
He brought up, he brought up the trafficking, but he, he said that, he, he brought it up.
Okay.
He did.
Cause I know that.
Cause I didn't know that existed.
I didn't either.
Engineers.
Yeah, a couple years ago.
Only allows certain places in the world. Almost, and not, you know, to two or three.
I've had that experience too, when sometimes they're not the most desirable.
On that section, I believe that sex trafficking is an Iowa specific law. And so if you have out-of-state travel, there's no way to meet that requirement. So I'm not sure what we.
Well, that would, that should only be for Iowa specific locations that.
I agree completely, but it's.
According to Iowa law.
Oh, or not Iowa law.
But that's not, that's not how it reads.
I did find out through the conversation with that person that where we had always stayed for the state fair was on that normal list. I mean, my family, I brought my whole family to that hotel. I'm like, seriously? But it's right off of I eighty and they said it's a bad location. But I thought, it was a good location because it was easy to get to. But yeah, no, we don't stay there anymore.
Cause I know the one, yeah, the one, I stay at, it's right there, that's certified.
Oh, it's like crack, crap. We don't need to have them there at all. I mean, I know it's real, but come on, don't barge down with every little.
State law.
Did it say state law?
I think it's, I think it's.
So why the hell are they having the meeting at Perry Meadows?
I think the issue has come up that I've seen is they have been, but then they have, they're not current. They ha, I don't know what they have to do to stay current, but I think that's some of the issue is they, they need to get.
Fall in and out of certification?
Something like that, so.
Well, but we're having a statewide meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're supposed to follow state law.
Yeah.
Perry Meadows is an opportunity to supervise.
It is.
So do they qualify?
He just said it.
They.
They are, they are certified.
They're certified twelve twenty one, twenty twenty four.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think Isaac would be hosting an event at a place of.
Like when he made his reservation, they weren't certified. That's very possible.
No, this is twelve twenty one, twenty four.
But he was a new one.
Well, that.
No, this is in January twenty five. He made his reservation in November. He, it's very possible. All right, get him.
Yeah, anyway.
It's law, it's law. Listen to.
Better than.
So out-of-state hotels could be an issue with the way that wording is written.
So what, what did you, out-of-state?
Well, if you have a hotel that's not in Iowa, they don't have this sex trafficking training. That's Iowa specific.
Yeah, that's Iowa specific law.
And the way this, this blue edition is.
Should apply to, only apply to travel in Iowa.
Iowa hotels.
In Iowa traffic.
Yeah. Cause that's the states specific, yeah. Who wasn't, Dan was just talking about his national training, timed up for and stuff. So they won't have that.
That's what looks fine.
So C, meal expenses cross off to not exceed twenty dollars per meal, because again, that's back to.
Exceed rate set by the board supervisor.
And then leave it at the rate set by the board supervisors.
But our policy says twenty dollars.
It does say twenty?
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
Our policy says twenty dollars.
But if it's always set by the board supervisors, we'll be able to change that without changing.
Well, it depends on what we tie in. If we tie that in to here.
Yeah. Right.
So it just needs to say meal expenses set at the rate.
Sure.
How often do we look at that policy?
Meal expenses do not exceed rate set by the board supervisors.
Yeah, I, I think only when somebody brings it up, I think.
Mileage adjustment.
Right.
Well, well, the policy says that you guys observe the IRS rate, so it doesn't get changed unless you don't observe the IRS rate.
Right. Well, we, we, we put that at number D on a mileage at the established IRS rate. Cause it says county, which ties in, but that would clarify it.
It would clarify it and then if we don't have it in the handbook, different, then we never have to change it.
Speaking as a department head, having a policy and having redundancy in the handbook,
Handbook.
I have a concern and all it's gonna do is create a lot of problems.
I think.
So I think you either need to, you, it only has to be in one spot. You cannot have it in two separate locations. It's a, it's a nightmare to edit. And show, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that has anything to do with personnel, which the handbook is more of a personnel type thing. Policy is, is policy.
I think Anne said that, something like that at one time too, that, that your handbook is just like Doug said, personnel. Your policies can be more detailed.
Yeah, and I think too, in that way, if we have, um, a. Yeah, and I think too, in that way, if we have, um, a need to change our policy, if our handbook always says to follow the policy set forth.
Mm-hmm.
Then we're always current. Otherwise, it's hard to keep these things current if you make changes. And a lot of times, those changes are geared from our audits.
Right.
The audit people will say, hey, you really should have a policy for this.
Right.
So if, if we change it, and obviously some of those things can change with the time, so if they, if we just say that in the handbook must follow the policy set forth by the board supervisors. Everybody's always current. The handbook's always current.
Right.
Is that kind of what you meant, Doug?
No, I don't know if the, I don't know if the handbook even needs to necessarily. Talk about credit cards. If you have a policy, a separate policy for credit cards, that's the policy.
What?
Personnel is your employment practices, your. Having to do with being employed, having to do your job is a little bit different.
I don't, I think it's okay to reference it a little bit.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I don't, as a department head, I would hate to have somebody reading a, a policy. And it'd be different if it's, if the handbook has. If the handbook has a policy in it, and the two are different, which is, it seems like we, the last two parts of the handbook. We've discovered that we've got policy, we've got verbiage in the handbook.
I think it's okay for employees to know we have a policy, but I don't, in my opinion, the policy doesn't necessarily have to be in the handbook. If we want them to have a policy, we can give them a copy of it, especially if they are ones that have a credit card or whatever they need, they do need that because they have to sign it. But. We would never have a current handbook if we put the policies in there.
Right.
Well.
But I still think it's still paying a price.
That gets a whole other discussion, that instead of having. You gotta, in my mind, the handbook is gonna be a live document. That is gonna be located somewhere. And, and I, I look at it as being electronic. If you want the most recent. Copy of it, you go to somewhere in a folder on a computer. And it's got the most recent, up-to-date handbook that there is. Somebody's gonna be in charge of. If something gets changed with, with earning vacation.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's gonna be, the handbook is gonna get edited and, you know, it, it's a live document.
If our policy changes, they put that policy in the document.
And there should be something similar with policies, that all the most recent policies. Are located somewhere, so they're accessible to all employees, all department heads.
Yeah. I can see that being okay. Then they need to, you know, when they get their copy of the handbook, they would still get a copy of the handbook on, on.
Sure.
Being hired, they have to acknowledge the fact that that is a live document that could change. They need to go here for the latest version. And they, they need to acknowledge that, so they can't say, well, this is the handbook you gave me when I went here. I'm sorry, I'm being a devil's advocate saying this could happen, but those things happen. So I don't know. But I, that would be actually a really good idea, yes.
Yeah, I think having it available electronically is especially, any time someone wanna look is definitely a good idea.
Yes.
It, it is.
We talked about that.
It is on the pub.
Yeah, we've just, it's been discussed.
Many times.
But it is on the public drive.
The handbook is, but like some of these policies, we've started to try to do a whole, we've tried, I know. We've, we've gotten stalemate, I guess is probably the best way of how to.
Yeah.
How that, have that a coordinated effort, so that when you're looking at a policy, you know that this is the version, the current version versus. I've got twenty sixteen, you've got twenty seventeen, you have twenty eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It is a nightmare. And, and I'm, I'll wave the white flag on that. I mean, I've got a stack and I didn't bring that book of policies that I could have back to. When we had to start filling out time sheets, I mean, but again, that doesn't say it anyplace else.
Correct.
I mean, I think in nineteen ninety five, there was a little thing typed up. We now have to do that. And, and, but we don't have it anyplace else. It's just kind of moved through the system.
Hate to say it, but it kind of sounds like a good job for IT and HR to coordinate something to get that coming.
We tried. Why are you shaking your head?
We would need you for that effort.
So one of the things, um, Anne has talked about, like breaking down, when, when I've talked to her about CAJBC stuff, is policies. That the board controls, or, or like, stuff that's in the handbook should be board controlled versus. Policies and procedures of what time they do lunch, or cleaning, or whatever. Oper- daily operational practices would be more policies and procedures controlled by administration. So I guess, like if. Uh, Tammy has a plan of how the maintenance or custodial staff goes through their tasks or offices, that's a. Internal policy and procedure that she's controlling as a department head, but whether it's, um. Credit cards, or meals, or any of that stuff that's controlled by the board, I, I would think that would make sense to be in the handbook. And. If we have to update something, we, we can update it, but, um, from, from the conversations I've had.
You're gonna have the proof that can.
Well, everything.
And you're gonna have, there are policies, for example, that the secondary road department, that are passed by the board supervisors. They have nothing to do with the auditor's office. Um, there, if you're gonna include all the policies that the board supervisors approve, you're gonna, you're gonna have a, a document that is pretty large. And it's not necessarily. It, it's not. It, it. It's not, it does not pertain to employees in general, um, unemployed. That's to the road department. I'm just saying.
There's gotta be an understanding, cause like, law enforcement would be the same.
Correct.
I mean, when we had case management, we had our own pers- policy and procedure that nobody would have wanted to look at.
Yeah, but that wouldn't have been approved by the board.
That's what I mean. So those are, yeah, so those things that were.
Correct, no, but.
Right.
There's ordinances as well that should. Be available.
Like, or snow ordinance or something. That's all recorded separately. That's not a handbook issue. It's still board approved.
No, I'm saying they should be. The most recent should be available. If I wanna find the most recent ATV. Ordinance. I shouldn't have to go to the recorder's office and get it.
We're working on having those available on the new website, I believe, so, um.
Well, yeah, and that, that's fine too, but even, even our website doesn't necessarily have the most recent.
No, but we're, but it should, once we get a new website up, we're working on that, so.
It should.
On the policy procedure electronic side of things, I think it's a great idea. It might be time for us to start looking at an HR specific package that handles all those policies and procedures. And it has an automatic sign-off on employees, time and date when they did it, and then ask if you changes, it goes out to that group, and then they can electronically sign that they got a new copy of that, so. Most bigger companies are doing something of that nature and for.
Yeah, we tried that phrase, they did internally and it's.
It's, there's whole HR suites, that that's all that they do, and that's probably time to start looking at something like that, so.
Yeah.
Rather than paper, historical way we've been doing it forever. Um, I don't, I can start looking at that, if you'd like.
I think so. I think you should look at it.
Yeah.
We're moving on.
Moving on.
That was the last section.
I'm sorry for that.
No, you're correct. It does. I mean, and that's, that's probably why we've been stalemate with all of this, because it, it just mushrooms into.
Yes.
Really what's.
Then I had a question on this, section D of this last piece is, do you really want our employees to take their expenses to Tammy to do a claim for her? Am I missing that?
Okay, each person claiming.
On D.
D?
Yeah, or I guess we're.
Below D, it's under D.
Below D.
So what do you mean by?
That red section there.
Oh.
Each person.
Yeah, for crossing off the travel expense reports or receipts are to be submitted to the department head after the employee returns from the event.
Or should be.
Or are we striking that? And the next section, does they sort of file with the auditor?
No, the department head should.
The department head, yeah, just like normal.
Right, but that's not how that.
It doesn't say.
It says each person, so each department.
Why do we strike out the first section?
But you have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'd say leave that sentence, yeah.
Okay.
Because it's our department that actually approves that expense.
Yeah, just.
To be taken to the auditor.
Right.
Looks good to me.
It's good. But the one thing I wanna point out, that if we ever have a board that's kind of stingy about maybe closing during an absolute blackout. Um, so you're aware that the board has control of whether or not to close those doors. An elected official can decide whether you close those doors or not to close their office.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
You know.
Well, just, just like the board can't say to employees, you're gonna work X hours, I mean, that, we, we require departments. To be open, or the courthouse to be open, but it's up to the department heads how they wanna manage their office in that way.
Right.
Right?
So I'm just saying, like, if they decide to close, there's no point in having the doors.
Sure, I guess that would be a situational thing.
Um, as far as section C goes, we had the discussion early this year about, um. Those departments that are in public service that are expected to work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, during the times that the courthouse is closed. I know we had the discussion about. Putting in there that those departments that are working, that are in public service, get, um, because the employees that don't come in. Uh, get that paid time while, then we need to look at it as we're treating the closed time as similar to holiday. And, um. Those departments that are expected to work, that are in the public service, um, and I remember we had the conversation about it, and I had brought up that we need to. Potentially put something in there that says that those departments get paid a time and a half. I remember having a discussion on it, and I don't know where.
You're saying in the event the courthouse closes?
When the courthouse is closed, and the employees that are told to stay home to get that paid, correct?
It was voted down.
It was voted down.
It was voted down. I'm not necessarily saying I don't agree, so that maybe we should do something, but everyone voted down at that time.
Okay.
We did have the discussion, yeah, end of, no.
Um, I think it was said at the time, but I think if you look at the private sector, um. It's much more common that employees are not paid if the business gets closed than it is if others receive extra compensation for coming in. So B and C kind of correlate there.
We're not hard at San Diego public.
And I don't want people coming in because they're worried about being paid or not in a blizzard.
Cause we would be liable.
But they, but they do have the option under A that they could use their vacation.
But they might not want to.
Or have any.
We've had the discussion before, though. We would be liable. We would be liable if they were in an accident or killed.
Yeah.
And who was that discussion with?
Probably with Renee Von Bolkern at that time, when we were talking about these things. And it's been a while, but.
We could have that conversation, yeah.
Me as a department head, I don't want that on my conscience.
I, I. I don't either. Would be wrong if it was a holiday.
It is a nice, I mean, I, I totally get where you're, where you're seeing. It, it, it's a very nice benefit. I mean, whether we're public or private or whatever, I mean, that. That's, that's, that's very nice of an employer to do that. I mean, I've. Most people, if I don't, I don't get paid. That, that's just how the world, I mean, that, that's, that's for me, but for a lot of employees out there. But it is very nice that the county does that. And, and I, I understand the logic of why we do it. It's just. Need to recognize that that is very nice that the county does that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I purpose, I, I'm not, I'm not interested going to the time and a half, with, you know, far more people are probably working those days than people that aren't working. Uh, between the road department, the ambulance, the sheriff, everything, uh, I'm not, I wouldn't be interested in a policy where if we close the courthouse, we pay the people at work time and a half. I, I could probably get on board if, if we close the courthouse, you, you don't come to work and you don't get paid unless you use vacation time, but I'm, I'm not pushing that agenda, but I could agree with that. I wouldn't agree with going to time and a half or being at work and everything. I, again, we had the discussion at the time, but it doesn't happen very often, just because it happened two times this, in March this year. Right? It, it hadn't happened in several years.
It doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen very often. It had happened. It had happened.
It had happened, maybe, maybe once a year.
Some winters, we have some more severe winters. They seem to be not as severe anymore, I mean lately, as of late.
Last couple years have been pretty nice, yeah. Things all hit you at once.
For, for, uh. For my opinion, this, this business, we serve the public, everybody serves the public, every business out there serves the public. It just is. And I, I don't, we're not private business, no, we're not, obviously, it's accounting, but I, I. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of good benefits, as Carter mentioned, I recognize as a benefit. Hey, I'm done, I'll be done. Be what you be.
Are we good with how this is worded for now, or wanting to change, or?
Sharing the discussion on a floating holiday for that.
For those that were.
Whereas a time and a half could, I mean, that could get expensive, and I, I mean, a floating holiday, yeah, you have somebody not working, but they're. You pay the wage anyway.
We had that discussion on the floating holiday, the week following, one of the form events this year, and the board ended up not doing anything.
Well, when we had that discussion, we decided not to do anything because we were gonna revisit.
Her, her having to discuss the handbook.
Yep.
Yeah, you're right, Josh.
Yep.
And you know, if you, if you. If pays an issue, and in this would get technical, I'm not necessarily saying I'm for it, but it could be a compromise. You could say up to. Three instances or something, or two instances, or, you know.
Well, you know, because, you know, we don't, we could have that winter.
If you close the courthouse five times, yeah.
Yeah, but I would, we could do something like that. I'm not. So we have the party for it, but it's, it would be a compromise. Just like that.
You guys, in the back, your departments are closed when, when, if they close the courthouse?
We're still on call twenty-four seven, tier sixty-five, whether the courthouse is closed or not. So we all have laptops, we're expected to respond to law enforcement, dispatch, ambulance service, so. If the building's closed, fine, we're at home.
If the building's closed, fine, we're at home, um, it's, it's.
Why do you ever come?
What's that, why do you ever come? Because some things we have to be on site for.
Doug, your office?
What's that?
I said, I'm talking to Doug, is it your office?
During normal hours, I would be in the office, and there may or may not be others. One person, one person, but they get paid actually their salary, employees that aren't being paid by the hour.
And you're able to get here, being, you live in town fairly easily too, or a little more easier than some, but, yeah.
There's, there were people in the engineer's office that do not live in.
Right.
In Algonah that were here during the days that the courthouse was closed.
Floating holiday, question mark. Something.
I would just as soon leave it worded as it, as it is here, but. At the moment, I, I don't know what. Or as edited.
That's presented.
As presented, there you go.
Alright, is that the last one?
That's the last one, it's twelve oh seven.
Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion by secretary to adjourn.
Are you thinking review next session, next?
About.
Next week or?
When do you wanna, when do you wanna go over those sections you wanna look at?
Next week.
The ones that we've discussed here.
Couple weeks, adjournment needs time, whatever.
Well, I'm just, no, it's right after Memorial Day, I do have a meeting on the twenty-seventh with NIRA, again.
You have two weeks, I'm there.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, you have to confirm.
Two weeks, we find, and review the sections that we just went over that we needed to iron out.
Plus the next.
Well, and then when you get into the next, I mean, there are a lot more comments, section two.
Rather just finish one.
Yeah.
Yeah, section one, and then we can move on.
Move on.
Yeah, then we can say.
So we're not throwing too much on the pile and getting confused and.
That's right, cause I was gonna say, cause I think you're great, and again, I would think that those are gonna be very, is they're very departmental.
Forget.
Yeah, yeah. Sure.
We need to have that representation.
Very good, we'll come back to it in a couple weeks. There is a motion, second, for to adjourn. Um, all in favor of adjournings, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous, we adjourned at twelve oh nine P M.
And Renee.
Thank you, Donna and Eric.